Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our February Board of Education meeting. Can everyone please stand for the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. In case your kids haven't told you yet, it'll be a traditional snow day tomorrow. Alright, that's a good way to start off the meeting, right? Okay. Alright, so we are going to have our Director of Athletics, Mr. Scott Stubber, to recognize our fall athletic teams. Mr. Stubber, thank you.
Good evening, Board of Education, Dr. Rogers. Once again, I thank you for the opportunity to celebrate the great success of our fall student athletes. We had another tremendous fall season, and I'm happy to highlight that every one of our teams, again, were scholar athlete teams. So that's a great accomplishment. So as some people may realize, tonight is a big night for our winter track and field program. They have their state qualifiers at St. Anthony's. So we are missing quite a few of our athletes who participate in our team. So I'm going to first speak briefly about our boys' cross-country team. They had four all-county athletes, and the team finished as runners-up for the large schools. Louise Cruz is a 10th grader. He's a very passionate and competitive athlete, who was a top sophomore finisher in the race. It's the second time he's earned all-county honors. Tyler Ganey, a junior. This was Tyler's first year as an all-county athlete. He has improved consistently from last year and will look to lead the team to a county championship next year. Jesse LeBolt, 12th grade. Jesse is one of the two seniors on our entire roster. He has a positive attitude and great leadership, and it went a long way to help the team over the course of the season. And finally, Christian Frangis. He's a 10th grader. His work ethic over the summer and the early part of the season paid off as he ran the best race of his life when it mattered the most. I'd like to thank the Board of Education and the community for their continued support. So that's the boys' cross-country team. And, you know, these four young ladies up here are great athletes, and I'm proud to say they're part of the Nassau County Championship Cross-Country Team that competed up at the state. We had their 12th consecutive county championship. The girls dedicated much of their time throughout the summer to prepare for the fall season. Many thanks to the parents who get them everywhere they need to be. And the following girls earned all-county. Julia Shaughnessy, who's running tonight. Rin Furukawa. Ashley Wong. Melissa Tinieri. Arianna Sidrahmi. Arianna Stepote? Gianna Lavaca. And Juliana Regosa. Congratulations on a great season. Thank you very much, ladies. Thanks. I'm now proud to introduce members of our varsity bandit team that made it to the county semifinals, losing to the eventual champion, Jericho. The boys had another winning record, an overall great season, including a huge win over Great Lakes South for only the second time in school history. We had four all-county athletes, and three of them are here tonight. First, Hagan Liu is a senior and a three-time all-county player at doubles. He was also the captain of this year's team. Next up is Tom Liu. Tom Stepote? Tom is a senior, a two-time all-county player at doubles. Tom was also captain of this year's team. Congratulations. Ethan Alex. Ethan is a junior who played first doubles and earned all-county honors. John Song. John is a junior who played first doubles and also earned all-county honors. I want to congratulate all of you, wish you the best of luck in the future, Tom, and Ethan and John. We look forward to another great season. Congratulations. Next up, members of our varsity football team. Varsity football team had another successful season, finishing as the Conference One runner-ups to Mesa Peak with a great season. We had three members earn all-county honors. First up, Jake Cohen. Jake is a three-year, two-way starter who played offensive line and linebacker, and was also named to the All-State team. Congratulations, Jake. Next up is Sean Dillon. Another two-way starter who anchored the line and served as the team's kicker, including the game-winning field goal to upset Farmingdale in the Nassau County semifinals as time expired. Sean earned all-state honors and was selected by Newsday as a member of the All Long Island Second Team for his defensive play. Congratulations, Sean. Mustafa Muzawala had one of the most decorated seasons a high school athlete can have. In addition to being named all-county, all-state, and first-team All Long Island as quarterback by Newsday, Mo, as we call him, was also honored with the Don Snyder Award as the Nassau County Most Outstanding Quarterback. Congratulations, guys. I wish you the best of luck in your future endeavors. And at this time, it gives me a great pleasure to introduce our girls... Almost got them, they're quick. It gives me great pleasure to introduce our girls' varsity volleyball coach, Coach Liz Christensen.
Good evening, happy snow day. Again, the girls' volleyball team had an outstanding season, led by a really experienced group of players. I'm so proud of these two young ladies. First is Kate Nelms. I know everybody knows Kate for her abilities on the basketball court, but Kate has grown into one of our top hitters. She just loves being part of a team, always a smile on her face, and always one of the hardworking players on the court. She just had an incredible junior season. She was our leader on offense in kills, and just works to improve her game every single day, and I can't wait for her senior season, because I know it's going to be something special. Kate Nelms. Amy Ri is a four-year varsity player, a three-year varsity starter as our setter. She can set a ball from just about anywhere on the court to whatever player needs to get the ball. She's been such an integral part of the incredible success the girls' volleyball program has had, as we just have had an incredible group of setters, especially over the last 10 years, and she's just another one in the row, an outstanding leader to our young setters in our program. And Amy really just had an incredible senior season. Late in the season, she tallied her 1,000th varsity assist, an assist meaning that one of her teammates put the ball into the floor, and it's an incredible goal for any high school varsity athlete, so we were so proud of her. Her leadership is going to be sorely missed, and we thank her for just an incredible four-year career with us. Amy Ri.
It's my honor to introduce our boys' varsity soccer coach, Coach Brett Waxer.
Thank you, Dr. Rogers and the Board of Education, for inviting all our athletes here tonight. Your support is always greatly appreciated. Just a quick thank you to Mr. Stubber. Your passion and encouragement for all our teams here in Siosas is greatly felt. The Siosas soccer team had a great season this past fall. We qualified once again for the playoffs. Unfortunately, it took a quick early exit in our quarterfinals. The two young men we have here tonight truly represent our program to the finest. Junior Jack Pendrick earned himself all-county honors for the second year in a row. This is also Jack's second year to be named Newsday's Top 100 Players to Watch. Jack is one of our captains this past season, and we're looking forward to having him lead our group once again next year. Jack is truly a great young man who always represents our team to the finest. Senior... Senior Sawyer Wayne. Sawyer earned himself all-county honors this season. Sawyer has been the captain of our program for the past three seasons. Sawyer, over his career, has become one of the most decorative players in our program's history. This season, besides earning all-county, Sawyer was named to the following: Newsday's Top 100 Players to Watch, Nassau County AAA Defensive Player of the Year, All-State, First Team All-State, All-East Regional Team, Newsday's First Team All-Long Island Team, and he was presented with a Ralph Whitney Award at our Nassau County banquet, which represents the best player in all of Nassau County AAA. We don't replace players like Sawyer, but his impact on our program will be felt for years to come, and he's an unbelievably young man both on and off the field. Thank you all.
I'm going to do this very slowly to give them time to get down here, to introduce our coach of our varsity girls' soccer team, Coach Tyler Arnon.
Good evening, everyone. I'd just like to thank Dr. Rogers, the Board of Education, Mr. Stubber, for all the support you showed our program this year. As a first-year head coach, I just want to say this group of young women was incredible to work with. They are leaders in the classroom and on the field. I'm so incredibly proud of what we accomplished this year individually for them, but as a team, finishing second in the Power Conference and making it to the county finals. So, you know, our team was led by our captains and seniors. Marley Alterak, who all-county and will be playing college soccer at Emory. Michaela Kemp, who received all-county, all-state, third team, and will also be playing college soccer at Emory. Samantha Goldberg, who will receive all-county, will be playing college soccer at St. John's University. And Brooke Barry, who receives all-county, all-state, second team, and just found out she got into the University of Michigan, but still undecided on where she wants to go.
Congratulations, ladies. Great job. Sounds like we have a road trip to Georgia. Alright, next up, I'd like to introduce Coach Mike Cipollina and our girls' swimming and diving team, who, by the way, Nassau County Champions.
As you can see, it takes a big group in swimming and diving to pull off the county championship. I would first like to thank the Board of Education, administrators, and the entire community for all the support that you showed us over all the years. In a sport like swimming and diving, we often recognize the achievements of individuals, but it took the entire team of 35 girls coming together to win our third consecutive Conference One championship and our second consecutive county championship, which is also the second in school history. I am incredibly proud of each of these girls and their incredible dedication and effort throughout the entire season. Tonight, I'm going to share some of the achievements of five of our all-county athletes that are here with us tonight. First, sophomore Madison Lin. Madison has an incredible passion for the sport. Her terrific work ethic and her great spirit has led to tremendous success in the pool. Madison was all-county and county champion in the 200 individual medley and 100 freestyle. She was also top 10 finisher in states in both those events, and actually in the 200 medley and then also in the 100 breaststroke. She's also the school record holder in the 200 individual medley, 100 freestyle, and both 200 and 400 freestyle relays. Madison Lin. Junior Rachel Chen. As you can see from right now even, Rachel always has a smile on her face. Her positive attitude is infectious, and she is a great motivator and role model for her teammates. Rachel was all-county and school record holder in the 200 freestyle relay. Rachel Chen. Junior Caroline Hu. Caroline always puts her team and her teammates first. We can always count on Caroline to come through victorious, when an important race is on the line. Caroline was all-county and school record holder in both the 200 freestyle and 400 freestyle relays. Caroline Hu. Our third junior here tonight, Joelle Lee. So before the girls' season started, we were invited by a local chapter of Swim Across America to participate in a charitable fundraising event, and right away, Joelle stepped up as a team leader and said that she would help organize the girls' team effort to participate. And initially, you know, we were brainstorming goals for, you know, how much could the team raise? We were thinking, maybe we could possibly raise $1,000, and, you know, very quickly that was surpassed, and then could we do 2,000? Could we do 3,000? And, you know, because of Joelle's incredible efforts, the team raised, the Siosas team raised over $10,000 for cancer research. So Joelle does great things, not only outside of the pool, but great things inside of the pool as well. She was all-county in the 100 butterfly and 400 freestyle relay this year. Joelle Lee. And last, but certainly not least, Senior Amelie Yang. Amelie is a team captain and has been an impactful swimmer her entire varsity career. She's someone that we can always rely on and, you know, call upon in any event at any time, where she'll step up and do her very best, and we're going to miss her very much next year. Amelie was all-county and a school record holder in the 200 freestyle relay this year. Amelie Yang. Thank you very much.
Congratulations, ladies. At this time, I'd like to bring up to the podium the Nassau County Coach of the Year, the Boys Volleyball, Coach Mike Aquero. the Nassau County Coach of the Year, the Boys Volleyball, Coach Mike Aquero.
Good evening. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the Board and Dr. Rogers for having us here tonight. This year, the men's volleyball team was an amazing group of young men, not only to coach, but to have the opportunity to watch play. This year, we had five all-county players. First was Reece Schwabish. He played... He played middle for us this year and took over this year as the team's heart and soul, giving all he had every game, as well as keeping the spirits and motivation up during games and during practices. Malvin He. He was a four-year varsity player with us. He played outside and right-side hitter. He is a model of what hard work and determination can do for any young athlete, going from being on second team in his earlier years to starting every game this season. Jason On. He was our setter this year. He was the varsity setter for four years. And for three of those consecutive seasons, he was our starter, the most by any setter in my time here coaching Cyossette. He had over 300 assists this season and two remarkable digs in the county semis to help send us to the finals. Michael Gata. He was also a four-year varsity player. He was our libero and was the best libero in Nassau County over the past two seasons, making plays and digs that most players can only dream of. Michael was also nominated to the All-Lon Island Team this past season. And last but not least, Aaron Johnson. He was with us on varsity for three years and our starting middle. He was the most skilled middle on Long Island this past season. Aaron also was nominated to the All-Lon Island Team, as well as Nassau County Player of the Year, while helping lead us to our first-ever county championship. This team was the first county championship that we've had in the boys' volleyball program in school history. So, thank you all.
Congratulations. It's my great pleasure to introduce Nassau County Champions, Long Island Champions, and New York State runner-up, our girls' tennis program led by head coach, Mr. Shai Fisher.
Good evening, members of the Board of Education, administration, and community. I'm proud to talk to you tonight about some of the achievements in the girls' tennis program this past fall. We're going to start out with our all-county recipients. Please step forward Ava Weinstock. Manasi Pradhan. These two young ladies earned all-county honors. At the county tournament, they won three consecutive matches, which included beating an excellent Roslin team, consisted of two girls, some higher positions in their lineup. And Manasi, Ava did a tremendous job on stepping up and taking them out and earned all-county status. Congratulations to both Ava and Manasi. We had four girls earn all-state honors. The first pairing I'd like to call up, sophomore Stephanie Marsharette. And junior co-captain Zia McCurgie. Stephanie and Zia got through four rounds and finished fourth in the county tournament, earning all-state recognition. Throughout the tournament, they were crushing their opponents. And you wouldn't know it, both of them were battling some injuries, but still held it together and earned all-state honors. Additionally, and to me, it's even more important, they were selected from over 110 girls competing in that tournament as the sportsmanship winners, earning them a scholarship to attend a college showcase at the end of June. Congratulations to both Stephanie and Zia. The second pairing of all-state honorees, eighth grader Dia Varma, please step forward. And senior Manami Wakazono, please step forward. Dia and Manami finished third in the county tournament, which then afforded them the opportunity to compete in our state tournament, which was Upstate in Schenectady. With the success of the program over the last five years, all the girls can attest to how difficult it is to get to that state tournament. It's only the second time that we've had girls qualify for states in the last nine to 10 years. Dia and Manami's achievements will set the bar even higher for our program. And moving forward, I'm sure will help motivate all the team members to even more success. Congratulations again to Dia and Manami. And now for our team accomplishments. I just want to call each and every one of you one by one, because this is a very special feat. Anya Batya, please step forward. Sophia Chang. Stephanie Marsharette. Dia Varma. Manami Wakazono. Ava Weinstock. Taylor Brescher. Julia Ischem. Kayla Lowe. Zia McCurgie. Jasmine Liu. Sunam Mehta. Elaine Liu. Stephanie Liang. Saisha Purri. Manasi Pradhan. Taylor Weinstock. Selena Wang. This really started at last year's awards night and team dinner. Last year, we lost in the county finals. And through the night, you could see the girls were just not happy with the result. Each and every member of the team took it upon themselves to improve over the offseason, which resulted in the deepest team we've had over my tenure as varsity coach and a 14-0 overall regular season record. But they had, the girls had bigger goals in mind. The girls won the first two matches in the team playoffs in convincing fashion. Then a nail-biter in the county championship over Garden City, led by junior co-captain Sunam Mehta and senior Manami Wakazono in first doubles. Followed by a victory in the Long Island Championship over Half-Hollow Hills East, led by senior Taylor Weinstock and seventh grader Selena Wang. And then an amazing win in the state semis over Bethlehem, led by sophomore Elaine Liu and sophomore Julia Ischem. Although we lost in the state final to Skarsdalen, I know the girls can look back and be super proud of their accomplishments, especially taking into account how young and inexperienced the team was from the beginning of this year and getting as far as we did. We definitely exceeded the expectations and surprised everyone. And that's a testament to all of you ladies. So, congratulations once again, ladies, on being New York State finalists.
Once again, I would just like to take a moment to thank the Board of Education and the administration, and most importantly, the parents. As they say, it takes a village. And we're very fortunate that our student athletes excel in the classroom, in the community, and obviously, on the athletic fields, tracks, and gyms and pools. So, thank you very much. It's been a great fall season. And we hope to have more greatness come up for the winter season. Thank you.
Thank you so much and congratulations again to these outstanding athletes and to the parents, to the coaches as well. And if parents, if you want to make a graceful exit, right now will be your time. We will be starting our budget meeting. And we'll have Dr. Ruffo, the Associate Superintendent for Business Services, who will present the budget information. Dr. Ruffo?
Good evening. And tonight is our first budget meeting. And this evening will be followed by three subsequent meetings. Trying to advance the clicker. There we go. So tonight will be followed by three additional meetings. Tonight, we're going to go through the capital and the administrative codes. We're going to just have, start with just a brief discussion on the budget climate. Talk a little bit about state aid and the governor's proposal and take a preliminary look at the tax cap. So, in terms of the budget climate, on Friday, I attended a meeting with all of the business officials in Nassau County. And I guess I would characterize it as a pretty somber meeting in terms of discussing the budget for next year. And there's several factors that are impacting all of us and then some that are somewhat unique to Cyossette. And I guess I'll start with health insurance, which has been, I've been up here the last couple of years talking about some substantial increases. And our projections for next year are also significant. And health insurance alone, at this point, accounts for about $4.3 million in our budget compared to last year. We have required contributions to the two state pension systems. At this point, we're projecting those to be at about $1.3, $1.4 million. So those two items alone in our budget, before we even look at any other item, account for about a 2% increase budget to budget. When you couple that with inflationary cost increases, you get a sense of where we are. And when we talk about inflation, we can talk about it, the direct impacts through contracts that we have, for example, transportation contracts that are directly tied to CPI. And then we have inflationary pressures in all of the purchases that we make, the paper that we buy, the books we buy, the maintenance contracts that we have. We're seeing increases in all of those costs. And for us, another factor is enrollment growth. And this is not something that's happening countywide. In fact, there's been a decrease in Nassau County overall in enrollment, but not for Cyossette, as we know. And we've been talking about the challenges for that on the facilities end. Well, it also presents challenges for us on the operating budget. So, and you can see the slides at the bottom that you're familiar with from facilities presentation. And then the top slide, you can see the difference. And the red line is the district's actual tax levy. The blue line is CPI. And then the calculated tax levy is the gray line. And you can see that we've been tracking below that. And then you can also see the impact of CPI when it jumps up in the '21-'22 school year. So while we recognize all of these challenges, we're working towards managing them. And similar to this year, we intend to work, our goal, and to work towards presenting a budget that preserves our existing programs and services for students. We want to expand our learning opportunities while managing inflation. So this may mean that we have to make reductions in other areas, particularly if we don't get any additional state aid. And we'll look to do that in non-instructional areas. In the current year, you know, we added additional supports for the social and emotional well-being of our students. We added social workers in every school. And we also brought on the partnership with Northwell Health. And it's our goal to continue those programs into the next year to help keep supporting our students. We need to continue to maintain our aging facilities and infrastructure. And while we've been talking about large-scale projects at our planning meetings, there are some small-scale projects that are built into the budget. And we'll go through those. And then we want to maintain our fiscal stability. And we know that we have relied upon that through the pandemic in helping us to manage the enrollment growth. And also, in helping us deal with emergencies, like building emergencies that come up on occasion. So we want to make sure that we continue to maintain our financial health. It's also important as we look to go into the market for investors with our bonds, because as long as our financial health is strong, that translates into lower interest rates for our borrowings, both for long-term and our short-term talents. So the other factor, of course, is the tax cap. '24-'25 represents the 13th year of the tax cap. And we have been under the tax cap in every year. And overall, cumulatively, we've been under about $11 million. And our tax cap is three-point, currently has been calculated at 3.23 now. There was a slight adjustment from, actually, just the other day when I logged on to the OSC website. And this is the formula. I won't go through all of the pieces of the formula, but there's an inflation factor. There are factors for pilots, for capital expenditures. And once those factors are plugged in, you arrive at the tax cap. For us, it's 3.23. That's a preliminary number. It will change based on building aid and some capital expenditures that we're considering. There's also an ERS exclusion that's new for this year because of the increase in ERS. So we are required to submit to the OSC on March 1st. So the number that we will submit to the OSC, I realize, see, that's very small, will be subject to adjustment until the Board of Education adopts the budget in April. State aid. Typically, we talk about state aid in March, but I wanted to share a preview of the governor's state aid run. And I wanted to bring your attention to foundation aid, where you can see that we're showing a decline of about $220,000. Now, state aid makes up about 12% of our budget. But in a very tight budget year, that really is, you know, meaningful to us. There was a notable change in the formula, the calculation of the formula for the executive budget. And that was a modification in the adjustment for CPI. If the formula, if the traditional formula was used, the adjustment for CPI would have been, I think, 4.7. But instead, they used a 10-year rolling average, which in a year with high CPI, that doesn't benefit the school districts or... So our advocacy group, I know other advocacy groups are talking with legislators about this and the adverse impact that's having on our budget, on our foundation aid. Universal pre-K. We're slated to receive another $1.6 million or 309 spots. So that will, in addition to providing a great service to our community, it also gives us a window into enrollment for the next year. So that's a really good thing. And it also enables us to identify those students a year earlier that might need additional services and start providing those services to them. So we're pleased with the allocation for next year. So I want to just move on to the two budget components that we're going to go over today, which is the capital section and the admin. The capital section makes up about 14% of our budget. And it includes the areas that are to the right, the custodial, maintenance, security. Also includes the capital side, debt service, transfer to capital, some of the larger projects that we do within the budget. that we do within the budget. We've mainly been talking, we've been talking about, I guess, over the last year, two main types of capital projects, using bond product, projects using your capital reserve larger scale. The two that we're going to talk about tonight are those that fall as part of the maintenance budget and through the transfer to capital fund. And the state gives us these four different ways of financing capital improvements. We've used them all successfully, but we're just going to focus on the first two tonight. And just before we review, I know this one is also a little bit small. We present the two comparative budgets, this year and next year. The next two columns are the comparatives, the dollar change, percent change, three years of actual, and then the FTEs. And you can see that for next year, we're not planning an increase in FTEs. The capital codes are forecasted at this point to increase at about 700K or 2.21%. And the increase is driven primarily by security costs. This increase is partially offset by a decrease in the borrowing costs that we're projecting for our TANs. I just want to go through a couple of the material variances in this area. So we have an increase in operations of plants. And that includes our custodial operations, for our ten school buildings, our utilities, and the custodial services that you see down at the bottom. And one of the changes that we have, or one of the additions we have, is an allocation for our turf field grooming, as well as an allocation for office space. As you know, we're experiencing enrollment growth in Southwoods. And we talked about the plan to move some of the offices out to make room for classrooms. So we put an allocation for office space in this code. We also have, about in the middle of the page, you can see all of the utility costs. And while some of them are coming down, and they're coming down a little bit overall, that doesn't necessarily reflect a reduction in rates. It's really just an adjustment to actuals. And we've already incorporated increases that we've received from our utility providers into these numbers. The next code is maintenance. And this includes all of our maintenance workers and groundskeepers and all of the contractual services for those areas. And it also includes a lot of the equipment that we purchased for the district. And those are outlined at the bottom as well. Those are our equipment. And then we have contractual services. So to the left, I would say that in those box, all the roof repairs, paving work, that's sort of our standard contractual services that we do each year. And then I'd ask you to focus on the box on the right. Those are also contractual services, but those are projects that we're doing this year. Both phase, there's a phase one and a phase two of auditorium lighting replacements. And we're going to replace the high school dance studio flooring. And we're going to refinish secondary school gyms. Code 1631 contains all the expenses for district-wide security. It contains our in-house security as well as our contracted security. So you'll see about a 645K increase or 17%. And that reflects an increase in the hourly compensation to our guards that occurred in the current school year, as well as increased security presence at school events and in our schools during the day. The transfer to capital line, it's the same as the allocation was last year, although obviously the lists of projects have changed. So we have electrical service, roofing projects, the office-to-classroom alterations that I talked about regarding the lease, district-wide paving, and district-wide electrical upgrades. And all of these projects have been noted in the BCS report. And these are projects that were identified and that were part of the allocation that the district had plans to do. So the first project is the electrical switchgear replacement at the high school and HBT. So that switchgear that you're seeing in those photos is original to the buildings. And switchgear, it's, you know, the key part of the electrical system. And it protects the electrical infrastructure. It isolates, controls, and just protects the electrical system. So it's a really important part of the operations, and that's going to be replaced. Each year, we do paving work. I think these are examples from South Grove. And we will do a variety of projects over the summer, paving projects. We have completed lots of our roof work through transfer to capital. And the plan is to do those sections. Base bid are highlighted in red. And if we can get alternates, depending on how the bids come in, we'll do the blue areas. And so that's the high school. And then we have an allocation for district-wide, should, again, should our budget numbers come in favorably. One area where we're seeing a decrease is in our tax anticipation notes or our TANs. And while we are still forecasting a similar interest rate that we had this year, we're reducing, we believe we can reduce the amount that we plan to borrow. And we'll be, we're looking closely at our cash flow to see if we can squeeze that a little bit more. And we do that, as you know, in consultation with our fiscal advisors and our bond counsel. The next section is the administrative section, which accounts for about 9.3% of the budget. All of the function codes that are comprised of the administration are in the box at the right. And so overall, you can see that the admin section increased about 1 million or 5.4%. That the increase is attributable to several expenses. There's a Wi-Fi upgrade project. We've had increased costs, again, this year, we're projecting for liability insurance, residency investigations. We have BOSI's administrative fees, as well as contractual salary adjustments. So just looking a little bit more closely at the areas that have variances, you see district meetings. District meetings is where we have expenses for the annual budget vote and district election. And we've been discussing the facilities plan for over a year. So we've included an additional allocation for a vote in the '24, '25 school year. Insurance. Last year, we had a significant increase. And NYSER has indicated that they think that that will continue into next year as a result of market rates, higher settlements, more settlements, and their exposure to CVA cases. The increases that you see there for BOSI's admin, those are allocations. BOSI allocates their administrative costs to their component districts. And just like our district, where we're subject to increases in NYSIP and pension costs, so is BOSI's. And so that's what's responsible for the percentage change in their codes. The personnel office is responsible for the recruitment and orientation of staff. But they also handle registration and residency functions. And the Board of Education has prioritized residency confirmations. And the increase in this area reflects our ongoing efforts that are, have already started to continue to verify residency and look at the registration process. Central data processing includes the staffing, sort of the admin part of the computer and the infrastructure, as well as district-wide departments like payroll and computer services. And so some of the increases are related to staffing changes. But the largest increase is attributable to the Wi-Fi upgrade project. The main, many of our access points are at end-of-life. And this project also enables us to improve our security. It enhances the identification, monitoring, and protection of the devices connected to the network. It'll enable us to transition from a hardware-based to a cloud-based system. And it'll enable us to isolate buildings and systems in the event of a cyber attack. And that's increasingly becoming a concern to school districts and to organizations. So the newer equipment comes with more robust security. And that will actually be a multi-year project done through BOSI. So we'll receive the BOSI's aid in the subsequent year. So those are the main variances in those two components of the budget. Next time when we meet, we'll go over the program and the instructional budget. Staffing meetings are being planned and are underway. We'll take a look at additional revenue and reserves. And we'll have any updates to the admin and the capital codes and updates to the tax cap in March.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Ruffo, for that comprehensive presentation. I just want to make a note that I really appreciate the administration and Dr. Ruffo for recognizing the importance of preserving existing programs and services for students, as well as for the social and emotional well-being of the students for the next school year. And these two items, you know, among others, are definitely on the top of the priorities. So I just want to take the moment to recognize that. So, and with that, any questions for Dr. Ruffo? Okay, Mr. Greco?
Thank you, Dr. Ruffo. My first question is in, I guess, it's 1620, when you were talking about the custodial operations. You mentioned an allocation related to the lease of office space to potentially make room for more students at Southwoods. Is that allocation its own number, or is it just sort of split within all of these line items? Can you give me a feel for what the allocation will be for that particular issue?
I believe it's between 80, it is one line item. I believe it's between 80 and 100, depending on the square footage. So I left room in there in case there was more space. But that's probably on the high end. I wanted to make sure that we had sufficient room in there.
And I just want to point out, we've been talking for a while about the enrollment bubble moving through the middle schools. It will arrive this fall. So we are going to have to take two of the classrooms that are currently being used as office space and convert them back to classrooms before September. So this allocation is to relocate the people who will be displaced by that.
One of my other questions is 1910 on the insurance. It's funny, a few of us were at BOSI's doing their budget, and there was a lot of talk about the increase in premiums. And I don't remember if it was 15%, but I'm assuming they're nicer. So this is a 15% increase in our premium, but it is an across-the-board nicer increase. It's not SEOC-specific.
They, their direction to districts was to use the increase that you received in the current year for next year as your preliminary projection. And so districts range in their increase. I know some districts had an 18, 19, 20% increase. It depends.
And I'll just amplify Dr. Ruffo's response again here. So the state's health insurance program, NYSIP, operates on a calendar year basis. The school district budget operates on a Ju-, July 1 to June basis. So we will, even after they give us a firm number, we will only have a number that represents the first half of the school year. So part of what we're doing is trying to project what the second half of the school year number will be, because that will come in the subsequent state budget.
I'm sorry, I thought you meant liability insurance. That was the question I was answering.
You mentioned the increase regarding our focus on residency in connection with 1430. And I saw on there an increase, I guess, in allocated salaries of about $157,000. So that's allocating the individuals that would be involved internally. And then there's also the BOSI services. I'm assuming that relates to when we have to outsource particular...
Services, correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any questions? Mr. Ostrick?
Sure, thanks, Dr. Ruffo. For our security services, do we have offsets in other parts of the budget for increase in security services for events that say they're after school hours and folks are requiring additional security? Or is these mostly related to events taking place during the school day?
These are mostly related to events taken during the school day and after, are recorded here. If we have offsets for community use and there's expense to that, that is an offset. But what's recorded in these line items are events during the day and after school.
When calculating the tax cap, you mentioned a new exclusion, the ERS exclusion, but it's a, I don't want to say dinky $25,000, but it would be nice to see a much bigger number in there to increase the maximum levy. Is that something that we can look into going forward to figure out a way to have higher numbers?
There is, there is, built into the tax cap formula is an exclusion for when the pensions, contributions to the pension system exceed 2%. So that, for ERS, they have that, those numbers plugged in. And so that's not something that we calculate. It's something that when you, we enter our information into the OSC system, because they manage ERS. That's what's populating. We have had, in years when TRS, I don't remember, several years ago, had a substantial increase, we had an exclusion for that. One of the, one of the offsets that we do have when it comes to the pension systems is the board-established reserves. So, and the point of the reserves, the purpose of the reserves, is to help buffer the tax levy in times when you have increases in these amounts. So for example, TRS going up 500,000, I would recommend using some, the reserve, so that you can, again, buffer the, as a revenue, as additional revenue source, to buffer the tax levy from that increase.
Thank you, Dr. Ruffo. Are there any more questions from the board for Dr. Ruffo? Okay, thank you so much, Dr. Ruffo, for your comprehensive presentation. And we look forward to March's budget presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, yes.
So while Dr. Ruffo is returning to her seat, I just want to make some observations about the budget process this year. Dr. Ruffo alluded to it, but the budget process this year is different from what I've seen in the past several years. So as the board knows, I began my career working in Albany on state budgets, specifically with respect to education aid. And one of the challenges in the state budget has been that state aid to schools was not tethered to any of the realities that schools were experiencing. The state fixed that by creating something called the Foundation Aid Formula. And what has happened this year is that the state has gone back to the practice of untethering the formula from reality. So the formula, if it had been allowed to run, would have had a generous inflationary increase for school districts, which makes sense, because school districts are experiencing an extraordinary inflationary environment. But instead, the state budget abandons that and uses a, as Dr. Ruffo said, a 10-year average. But that means school districts are expected to manage the inflation that the state chooses not to manage for itself. So we are purchasing health insurance today in today's marketplace, not from a marketplace that existed five years ago. So this is a problem that we're all experiencing. The second challenge is the state's formulas used to not be well tethered to enrollment changes. And what we're experiencing in the current environment is that our enrollment in SEOC, as Dr. Ruffo pointed out, has gone up about 6% in the last decade. But the county's enrollment has gone down about 5% in the last decade. So the delta with the county for us is about 11%. That's significant. But the governor proposes a reduction to SEOC of about 200,000. But the governor proposes a reduction to CIOSAT of about two hundred thousand dollars in state aid this year, which is counterintuitive, both given the inflation and given our enrollment growth. So it hasn't been necessary for me to advocate in the community that we go and advocate with our elected officials to improve on the governor's proposal, but that used to be a common thing that school districts, particularly on Long Island, would do twenty years ago. The governor's budget proposal would not be particularly generous to Long Island schools. Long Island schools would advocate with the legislature, and their legislators would improve on the budget, and that would improve on this, what the school district was able to offer and protect the tax levy. So we find ourselves back in that position again, but lobbying our legislators for state aid is an unfamiliar course of action for us, but one that I think we need to take seriously in the coming weeks. The state's budget is supposed to be finished on March thirty-first. It is often late, but they should have a new budget on April first. So we have essentially six weeks to make our advocacy known with our state legislators. I have been in contact with ours to inform them of the challenges that we're facing and, over the course of the next several weeks, provide people with opportunities to become involved as well, so that we can see some help from the state in managing the inflation and enrollment growth that we're experiencing.
Is this something we should be doing directly, or is this something we should be doing through an organization like the Nassau Self-Ex School Boards Association? I mean, I'm obviously not against sending a letter myself and advocating on behalf of our residents, but there are organizations that could do that for us. May I?
Sorry, I don't think it's an or question. I think it's an and question. So the more voices that are heard, the more impact that will have. And I think while the regional organizations can speak broadly, I think it's impactful for legislators to hear about our own particular circumstances, especially because we're kind of going in an opposite direction from other places, because we are experiencing enrollment growth.
Thank you, Dr. Rogers. Since we're on this topic, I am actually going to do my report on the webinar I attended. So I attended the state aid runs and the governor's budget webinar hosted by Nassau Self-Ex School Board Association last week. And at the webinar, it was exactly presented as what Dr. Rogers is saying, the two, two main points, and one is the whole harmless, and the second one is the, the way that they change the, the formula that takes inflation into account. And in short, Governor Hokos wants to use the ten-year average, like what Dr. Rogers described before, which amounts to two point four, two point four percent. And the current formula uses the prior U.S. inflation rate, which would be around four percent, even though it's just one point six percent, but, but that's a significant reduction in, especially during times when we have a growth in the enrollment. So the association also urged districts to speak with elected officials on these important points, and then I believe Dr. Rogers is also mentioning that as well. So we are right on track in terms of what we're doing to hopefully getting more, more aids from, from the state. So, okay, all right. Mr. Ostrick?
Dr. Rogers, would it be helpful to get some direction from the board to start composing a letter that we could all get behind? I don't know if you need our nod approvals to get started on that.
If that was the direction you wanted to go, I'd be happy to draft something for you to look at. All right, I'd be happy to get that started for you.
Are there any more questions? Okay, all right. So moving on to the approval of amendments of January eighth and twenty-third, twenty-twenty-four Board of Education meetings. Can I have a motion, please? Dr. Parr, seconded by Ms. Koshyer, are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? Dr. Ruffo, may we have the Treasurers' Report and Appropriations Adjustment?
As indicated in the Treasurers' Report, the cash on hand for the month-end December twenty-twenty-three was a hundred and eighteen million, a hundred and ninety-nine thousand, five hundred and thirty and fifty-five cents. It shows that bank balances for all cash accounts were reconciled to the book balances and were collateralized in accordance with the district's banking agreements and investment policy.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Ruffo, for the report. Can I have, can I have a motion to approve Dr. Ruffo's Treasurers' Report? Ms. Falcone, seconded by Ms. Levitin, are there any questions for Dr. Ruffo? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, next, we will have the presentation. Dr. Rogers?
You can just call Ms. Goldthwait up since you have the microphone.
Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Rogers and the Board of Education, for the opportunity tonight to be able to review some exciting enhancements to our special education programming. You'll see that some of these, oh, we timeout. Let me, let me, thank you. You'll see that some of these enhancements shipped and ships in program not only impact the students with disabilities within the district, but offer opportunities and supports for all students within the district. By incorporating inclusive opportunities, we encourage our students to participate in creating a community and culture where each and every student belongs. Both myself and Jeanette Wojcik, the Director of Elementary, PPS, UPK, and CPSC, will focus on these initiatives and enhancements during our presentation this evening. Our district is always striving to accomplish our mission to prepare our students for a future we have yet to imagine. In previous presentations, both last year and this year, you've had the opportunity to learn about different content area programming, be able to learn about different new pa-, and new pathways available for our students, highlighting instructional shifts that have been made, student data, and targeted MTSS interventions. Today, we'll focus specifically on our enhancements and new programs that have supported our students that receive special education and supportive services within the district. When creating programs and opportunities for students with differing abilities, we believe in the following guiding beliefs. First, inclusion. We want to make sure we are always looking to maximize opportunities for our students with disabilities within the general education curriculum and setting as much as educationally appropriate. Second, we want to create self-determined students, meaning we want them to understand who they are as learners, and more importantly, what their, both their strengths and challenges may be, while also protecting who they are as individuals. We also want to focus on teaching our students self-advocacy skills. They need to be successful moving forward and trying to create opportunities to enhance their independence in seeking out what they need to be successful, both in education and beyond. And lastly, we want to guide our students with disabilities in developing post-secondary plans, opportunities where they can understand who they are and how they could be successful as they move forward, not only in their educational career, but beyond. Tonight, we're going to focus on five key areas in enhancements that we've been able to make throughout the past few years. First, we'll be on early intervention, exploring a little bit more about our universal pre-K, UPK system, and the Committee on Preschool Education, CPSC. We're also going to focus on the expansion that has taken place over the past few years for our co-teach model within the district. We'll be talking about supporting transitions as students go from one area to the next throughout our K through twelve and beyond programming, enhanced inclusive opportunities, and increased school experiences, and supporting the needs of our whole child. I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Jeanette Wojcik to be able to stalk, talk about the first shift in our early intervention servicing.
Good evening. So our first enhancement we want to highlight this evening is our increased focus on early intervention. With the district's investment in universal pre-K programming, we've established a cohesive approach to educating our youngest learners. We believe in providing our preschool students with a head start through our curricular alignment, universal screening, broader and deeper skill development, and collaborative, collaboration between our community-based preschools and the district. This has made a distinct impact on preschool special education in many ways. We've incorporated strategic and targeted professional development, which has included such topics as incorporating targeted literacy instruction, understanding behavior, and supporting multilingual learners. Additionally, we have implemented a universal screener to collect data to identify strengths and areas of growth for each student. A positive outcome of incorporating the universal screener has been the ability to analyze additional data points when supporting CPSC referrals. Finally, our strategic partnership with preschools has allowed early integration of students with disabilities into classrooms with their same-aged peers. The continuum of special education services for school-aged students with disabilities is an array of services to meet an individual student's learning needs. Our district contains programs along the continuum, up to the in-district special class programs, which vary in ratio dependent upon student need. When analyzing programs for students, it's important to recognize that we always consider the least restrictive environment, or LRE, meaning to the great extent possible, we want our learners being educated alongside their general education peers. It's important to note that when we say least restrictive setting, it's not one specific place. The LRE for each child differs and is a principle that guides a child's educational program. This means the LRE for each child may look different, as each student has their own unique set of needs that must be targeted. The second enhancement is the expansion of our integrated co-teaching or ICT model. ICT is a model of shared responsibility that allows for professional collaboration during planning, instructing, and assessing students. Each co-teaching classroom has two educators, one general education teacher and one special education teacher. In any classroom setting, co-teaching allows students and teachers to experience and benefit from a wide range of learning styles, teaching techniques, and data-driven instruction, while promoting inclusion and a sense of community and belonging. At the start of the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four school year, we completed the rollout of ICT program options at the high school, which began in two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty. We currently have ICT options that exist in each of the four content areas, math, science, social studies, and ELA, at multiple grade levels. Planning at the high school, planning for post-secondary outcomes, which require us to be thoughtful about when and where we offer certain ICT programs. At the end of a child's high school career, we want them to be able to independently seek out support and advocate for their needs, as ICT supports are not available at the post-secondary level. The third enhancement shared this evening are transitions at each level, which exist to support students moving from one stage to another throughout their academic career. For our youngest learners, connecting the world of the Committee on Preschool Special Education, or CPSC, and the Committee on Special Education, CSE, has been instrumental. With the addition of administrative oversight, we have been able to strengthen partnerships, ensure continuity, advance learning and oversee alignment. Preschool is usually the first welcome into the school district for families, and connecting CPSC support to CSE support strengthens partnerships and has been vital in promoting a smooth transition for students. Providing a uniform approach between CPSC and CSE by bridging programs and support between pre-K and kindergarten ensures continuity of services as programs are built each year. As shared before, professional development between UPK and CPSC and CSE, vertical integration of skills as students progress through the district. Overseeing alignment of special education programs, both vertically and horizontally, provides students with a stronger progression of skill mastery. Next, Ms. Goldthwait will share more about our enhanced opportunities at the middle
The next transition that we focused on is having more enhanced opportunities at our middle school level. Prior to the past school year, there were two main course openings, as you can see on the screen, that we had within the district. The ICT program, or Integrated Co-teaching, and a special class option, which was referred to as General Studies. Both of these programs are geared towards supporting students with access to the general education curriculum. What we are now able to provide is an increased level of support that focuses on changing independent daily living skills and pre-able skills. This calls our RISE program, which stands for Reaching Independence Through Supported Education. Within the RISE program, students are challenged at their own level, where content is individualized in a smaller class setting. Prior to the school year, this program was only offered at the high school. The creation of the RISE program in the twenty-three, twenty-four school year will now provide a smoother transition for those students who benefit from a more individualized approach to learning, while we continue to enhance our other program options of ICT and General We have also focused the past few years on preparing our students for their post-secondary outcomes. As I shared previously, the creation of the RISE program was modeled on our existing life skills vocational programming. At the high school, we have now titled this our SOAR program, Supporting Occupational Abilities and Readiness. SOAR identifies students' individual functional levels, career interests, aptitude for community-based employment, work-related problem-solving skills, insight into job skills and real work settings, as well as an understanding of a student's individual learning styles for future employment. We've also added a new vocational experience for our students last year. Our Practical Assessment Exploration System, also known as the PAYS Lab, is a functional skills curriculum with an embedded formatted assessment for career potential and employability skills. The PAYS Lab simulates real-world settings to promote career awareness, self-determination and self-advocacy, social skills, vocational education and awareness, and community experiences to enhance post-secondary outcomes for students with disabilities. And finally, this year, for our transition and planning for students who will be attending college as their post-secondary outcome, we are creating or having an in-person workshop for families and students to help them support and understand what that transition looks like as we extend into the college venue. This is something that had been done prior in the past online, and we are trying to create a more informative and intimate setting where we can make sure we're meeting the needs of both students and families as they learn what they need to do to access supports in post-secondary endeavors like college. We've also increased our inclusive opportunities and community connections for students with differing abilities. We have created both a Challenger and Unified Sports Program, which began last year for the first time here in CIOSAT. Challenger Athletics is a mission to develop independence, confidence, and self-esteem through socialization and sport programs for individuals with disabilities. This organization is dedicated to providing sport programs for, to students because of their disability may not always be able to participate in mainstream-level sports. It's our goal to enlighten the community and inspire our athletes to exceed their potential and reach for the stars. Last year, we had track and basketball, and we will continue to have that again into the school year. Special Olympics is also dedicated to promoting social inclusion through shared sports training and competition experiences, which is the reason why they have endorsed the Unified Sports Programming. Unified sports is a little different than Challenger, because what it does is it joins people both with and without disabilities onto the same team, and inspires a simple principle: Training together and playing together is a quick path to friendship and understanding. We are excited this year to continue with our basketball unified team, and tonight, our unified bowling team had their first match. In addition, we have had many opportunities to be able to create a sense of connecting and belonging for students. Many of these activities have been part, have been in our system, and we look to continue to see ways that we can enhance these types of examples for students to participate in. They include after-school activities like something called Serendipity, which is available at both HBT and the high school, dancing days, peer connections, peers as leaders, and peers reaching out. We've also instituted a new buddy program at HBT this year, and we've also come up with different ways to enhance our partnership with our SEPTA, SEPTA PTA. With that, this year, we were able to offer, and last year, able to offer in-person different types of presentations from most often our district professionals, to be able to create that sense of connecting. to be able to create that sense of connecting and community between our district employees and our families. In addition to that, this year, SEPTA had their first movie event and a resource fair, where they were able to have up to forty different vendors in Robbins Lane Cafeteria, where families were able to be able to see what else is out there for them to be able to experience for their children. And here are some examples of ways that we've been able to kind of support our students and some ways and opportunities where you could see them enjoying these inclusive experiences. And lastly, our final enhancement that we'd like to highlight this evening, as you heard from some earlier presentations, is our increase in supporting the whole child. We have increased this year our mental health support to have a more proactive approach. We are grateful for your support, as this is the first year in which we have a social worker in each of our ten buildings. With this support and this internal support, we're able to have different items focused on and enhanced, as was discussed in our MTSS presentation, which includes, as you can see, examples of different proactive strategies, like push-in lessons for our students, small group and individual counseling, collaboration and professional development for all of the staff, and proactive connections and education for our families. New this year is our partnership with Northwell Health. Our mental health team, along with our partnership in Northwell Health, has allowed families and students to be able to continue to have support along the continuum of services as seen here. And it specifically targets different tiers of support for our students and families. Our staff training and community education is able to support early learners and the needs that they may have. This includes different types of identification of students who have mental health needs and universal suicide screenings. For our most at-risk students, we're able to link students to support or have in-person day of treatment options, psychiatric evaluations, and ongoing mental health care, which can include urgent concerns and crisis evaluations. To give an example of what this has done this year for our students is an example of our referrals that have occurred in Northwell. Referrals can come both from a building and/or from a family member themselves. And as you can see here, we have been utilizing the support from day one of our onboarding. Our onboarding has been extensive. We had our Northwell partners come in district to work directly with our mental health teams. In addition, they provided targeted professional development that has been sought out and wanted and desired by our mental health professionals. In addition, there's different types of tiered supports that the Northwell partnership does allow us to have access to. If you look on the left, the graph shows three different types of partnerships and opportunities that people can have access to. The first is community education, and that's education for any Cyosset residents. This is free and is available for you to be able to, and different types of topics, including burnout and how to work with your students when dealing with burnout, creating healthy settings and environments for your home, and sibling conflict. In addition to that, there is something called COINSTRONG, which is an educational youth and advocacy development program. Through this, we have a few different students working in partnership with Lauren Orwork, our school social, high school social worker, where they're able to get direct instruction on how they could support adolescent mental health. They are provided skill-based training in peer support and offer opportunities to develop leadership and advocacy and research skills. Our students this year will be actually going to Albany on Mental Health Awareness Day, March thirteenth, where they're going to be working closely with legislators, as well as creating opportunities where they're going to advocate for increased mental health supports within our state. So in conclusion, we'd like to once again thank you and express our excitement at the programming enhancements as a result of your support and our gratitude to support the work which we were able to highlight, increasing inclusive and in-district programming, programmatic and administrative supports to enhance transitions, supporting our extracurricular opportunities for students, and increasing our enhancing mental health support systems here. We are extremely grateful and thank you for your Cyos support.
Thank you, Ms. Goldsweth and Ms. Wojcik, for this wonderful presentation. And it's just amazing to see all the different programs that we have in our district. And with that, are there any questions? Okay, Ms. Abrinson?
Thank you again for the presentation. I really am very excited about a lot of the programs that are being put into place, especially with the enhanced inclusive opportunities. I think it's super important, and I'm glad to see that we keep building upon it. I did have, and also ICT going into the lower grades, I think is very important, so I'm glad to see that that's starting also. And it says here, it was a needs-based approach dependent upon individual grade-level cohorts. Can you expand upon that a little bit to see what that means?
Yeah, absolutely. So I think in the past, what we were at the elementary level, we were focusing a little bit on the intermediate grade levels, fourth grade and fifth grade, to be able to provide ICT support. However, what happens if you have a group of students in fourth or fifth grade that might not need or benefit that support? So what we've done within each of our seven elementary schools is really look very collaboratively with the school teams to be able to determine what does each cohort level looking like? If we have a group of students together that are showing similar needs and would benefit from an ICT approach, then that is how we dictate where the ICT lands within that school individually. So it does look different this year. Each of our ICT classes within all of the seven elementary buildings might land in different grade levels, and that is dictated and guided by the individual needs that the students present at each of those grades.
So that's great, but just to clarify, does that mean you could have technically six ICT classes, one per grade, in a school if need be?
So I would, I would say most likely, that's highly unlikely at this point in time. We haven't had groups of students that would require that within one building itself. So what we do at this point in time is it can range anywhere from two to three sections within a school, depending upon a particular grade level. And that shifts over time. Sometimes the ICT class may follow a grade level because that cohort continues to require that need, and it might mean sometimes we have to look at our special education staffing within that whole school to make sure that we are meeting the needs of the students. So at this point in time, most often, we have anywhere from two to three sections within each elementary school.
Thank you. The presentation was wonderful, and I agree with everything that Lynn said about building on all the programs. Just to clarify, so if you have one or two children in a school in a grade that would benefit from it, but it's not enough for a section in that grade in that school, what happens to those kids?
Yeah, great question. So there's lots of different other ways that we could support students. Most often, if we have students, so a lot of times in ICT is if you have a larger cohort of students that all require that push-in level support. If we don't have that number of students, then we have a combination of different types of supports available. It could mean that there might be some needs that that student may require, which is a pull-out support and might look like a resource room model. We also have direct consultant teacher services, and that is where a special education teacher pushes directly into the classroom, works with the teacher for specific content areas. So for example, you may have a student who doesn't necessarily require ICT for every aspect of their learning day, but would really benefit from having that additional provider in the classroom during the ELA period. So a direct consultant teacher would then push in during that period. So we do have inclusive opportunities that extend outside of an ICT program, and those are called direct consultant teaching services.
Is one model seem to be more beneficial than the other? Does the ICT model work better, or does the individual services seem to work better?
It really depends on the group of students, to be very honest, and that's why we really use that to dictate where programming is meant to land. It's similar services in the sense of what is kind of done a little bit more collaboratively on a more long-term basis and through a more partnership than maybe a consultant teacher push-in model. That would be your difference between ICT and the consultant teacher services. But very often, whoever is pushing in for a direct consultant teacher service is working in tandem with that teacher for that one specific subject area. So it really, a lot of times, it's looking at the whole child and figuring out, okay, what types of supports would they benefit from? And then within our programming, what do we have or what do we need to enhance?
Mr. Greco?
Something jumped out at me. Thank you very much for the presentation, both of you. The, your mention of UPK, Universal Pre-K, and the fact that, you know, since the state has been paying for it, we've been utilizing it, and it's usually what you hear, right? Someone's paying for it, it's free, let's set it up. Or you'll hear that there's advantages because it can give us a head start on enrollment, but I haven't heard that much about this side of it, where you can really get a feel and have this cohesive approach between the kindergartens and the UPK program. Are you, I know it's new, but are you really seeing that where this is valuable even if it wasn't paid for in full by the state?
So I think Ms. Wojcik probably could answer that a bit better, but what I will say is that even last year with our incoming kindergarten group, the current kindergarteners we have now, we had more information about those students who participated in our UPK program of those students than we ever had before. Ms. Wojcik really worked very collaboratively with our preschool partners to create folders for every child that included things like screenings and different types of things that they may have worked on, which we were able to transition and hand over to each individual building. So it really has created a partnership and an opportunity where we could start to work with our students even earlier than we ever had before. But I want to make sure I'm not missing anything there.
Thank you, that was good. I also think, to the point that Ms. Goldthwait made, we do create cumulative folders, so throughout the year, I work with the universal pre-Ks. We put in our universal screeners, any progress reports, student samples of writing, assessments that they use, and all that information is transferred to the schools at the beginning, at the end of the year, so that by the time school starts, teachers have information regarding our universal pre-K students. I work closely with the universal pre-K directors, teachers. I'm in there all the time, working and providing professional development to the teachers and getting to know the students, both through the universal pre-K lens, but I'm also the CPSC chair. So I spend a lot of time both with universal pre-K, but also with our special education families at the preschool level, which helps facilitate a really smooth transition for our special education students from preschool into kindergarten. So all around, it's made a really nice cohesive opportunity for us to get to know our preschool students and for them to really hit the ground running when they get into kindergarten.
I think Ms. Goldthwait went, I'm sorry, Ms. Wojcik went over this so quickly that I wanted to just linger on it for a second. Ms. Wojcik has been doing professional development with the teachers in these private providers in our UPK programs. So that's a tremendous investment of her time, but it's upgrading the skills. And then, she didn't mention, but should, the work that we've done on enhancing the curriculum that's in place at the UPK programs. So there was an opportunity for all of them to grow, and they were very open to that partnership with us. And so we've had the opportunity to work with them. That collaboration has been exciting for us both, because we see students coming out with a known quantity of expectations, and if they're not ready to make those expectations, then we're able to document that and be ready for them when they get here. And so having that alignment in terms of how we approach some of the reading skills and early literacy skills has just made that transition more seamless and has improved the quality of the program that our students are taking advantage of. So that partnership and the investment that we're making in these providers is not one-sided. It's not just paying for the seats, but we're really investing in the quality of their programs as well. And that is, again, a credit to Ms. Wojcik.
Dr. Park, you had a question? Okay, go ahead, Ms. Falco, yes.
I was just wondering, have you seen a different level and preparedness of the kids coming out of our program versus the kids that are coming in not from our program?
So it's a little bit early. We've only started UPK for just about a little over two years. We are seeing more cohesive alignment with curriculum, as Dr. Rogers said. So the students that are coming in from our universal pre-Ks have a better alignment to what our kindergarten expectations are, partially because of the professional development that I'm providing with them. We're looking at all of our literacy curriculums this year, that's one of our goals, to align our literacy curriculum and then enhance it with phonemic awareness practices. But we're also, we also incorporate not only a universal screener, but universal progress monitoring. And what that does is it aligns closely with what our kindergarten expectations are, so that our preschool teachers know what children are expected to be doing when they get into kindergarten. So while we haven't quite had an opportunity to collect specific hard data with regard to that, we know that the alignment that we're providing right now and taking a deep look at the curriculum is trailing that pathway for them as they get into kindergarten.
Thank you so much. I believe we have increased the number of students enrolled in the special ed program, is that true?
When it comes to number of students receiving special education services, there has been an increase, yes.
Do you attribute that to recognizing or detecting more students who were missed before? Or do you just see the higher number of students who need higher level of, who need more need, higher level of need?
So I think it's probably a combination of things. One is we are seeing more and more students require support through the mental health lens, and more students are being classified with things like emotional disabilities. That was not seen as much in the past as it is now. We, just like many other districts and what, you know, communities are facing, is there absolutely is a significant increase in mental health needs of our students. So some of the increase has become because we have identified students that require some form of a modified environment or support due to their mental health needs. That has absolutely, over the past two years, taken a significant increase.
I'm sure having a social worker in every elementary school has helped detecting those students who need help as well. So maybe we can add that as one of the items that we, the need to let the legislature know that we need, they can't cut the funding for foundation aid, that we have more students who need special ed program more now than before. Another is, another question, ICT program. You said that, starting this year, that the high school, there was a rollout of ICT program?
So the last classes that were not, there was a slow, a slow approach in the high school in the sense of integrating the ICT model there. This past school year, or this current school year, was the last of the rollout where ICT US History was added.
Are they, do you see that they are seeking help individually? Are they advocating themselves? Do you see that increasing in students, number of students seeking that help?
One of the beauties of the ICT program is the partnerships between general education teachers and special education teachers, so that kind of the tools, the tricks, and the different types of strategies that maybe a special education teacher would bring to an environment is now being modeled for all teachers to have access to. In addition to that, I think in general, in our high school, we're always looking for that self-advocacy. So it's helping students find those opportunities of how they can slowly feel comfortable to seek out that support on their own. And that comes, and that looks different for each student, and it comes differently over time. So what it can do for students is provide an opportunity where there's another individual in that classroom where they could seek that support a little bit easier than maybe just the one teacher that was there prior.
So is it more the student-driven or the teacher's driven?
Combination. You know, in order to build self-advocacy skills, very often, you have to provide the direct instruction on what that looks like, and then model what that looks like, and then expect it to be happening on a consistent basis. So what it can do is provide different opportunities to help students understand what it looks like to seek advocacy and to be able to get their needs met in different ways.
I think that's an important life skill as well, so.
Absolutely, and the high school has done a beautiful job of that overall. I think this is just another way to enhance opportunities for students to learn that from varying individuals throughout their school day.
Last question, I promise. Students who are participating in the Challenger Sports and Unified Sports, did all the students who wanted to participate have the chance to participate? Or was there a limitation in terms of the number of students who can participate due to whatever the limitations there?
So at this point in time, all students who have wanted to participate have been able to. And Mr. Super might be able to change, but I believe we have quite a few members on our bowling team. I think upwards of twenty-eight, I want to say. Am I right? Okay, so twenty-eight bowling members this year, and that includes both special education students and general education students.
Ms. Falco?
I'm so sorry, I had so many questions. In regards to the increase in mental health... I'm so sorry, I had so many questions. In regards to the increase in mental health, the rise in mental health issues, do you have any idea if it's, if the mental health issues are related to academic pressures, or if they are related to social pressures, if it's been divided up that way? Do we have any insight into the cause of the increase, if it's more social or more academic?
So it's very challenging to identify that. I would say you could see different reasons impact students in different ways. Sometimes there might be an academic or social piece, sometimes there's a biological piece. So I think it really is very individualized. To say that we're seeing an increase on one side versus the other, I'm thinking what I, we're seeing more is students struggling with the ability to cope. And that could be due to an academic concern, that could be due to social conflict, that could be due to biological, biological pieces internally, which they have limited control over. So I think the overarching theme of what we're seeing is students needing to learn how to be able to determine how to cope better with the stressors that they're dealing with on a consistent basis, and that looks different for each child.
I'd just like to add to Ms. Goldway's answer and say, we're currently exploring what is for us an open question about the impacts of the pandemic. And so I think my initial mental model for the developmental steps that were missed for kids was the metaphor of a ladder. So kids paused on the ladder in terms of their emotional development, but then they started climbing again and they just went to the next rung. One of the questions we have is whether that model's not really an accurate model, because students might have missed a developmental stage. At the time, it should have happened and have kind of gone past that, but there's a missing piece, almost like you're building an igloo, but there are a couple of missing blocks towards the bottom. So as the igloo goes up, the structure's weak because there's some, some missing pieces. So I don't know that we've established which of those two models is right, and it may be for some kids, it's the igloo model, and for some kids, it's the ladder model, and they just started climbing the ladder again, and they've got all the steps along the way. But we've certainly seen the impact of the pandemic. And post-pandemic, some kids have caught up quickly, and other kids have struggled. So that's, that's new, in terms of something that we've had to digest as a system and get better at serving. So it will, it's been a boon to have the Northwell Partnership, because now we have assets and resources that we didn't have before. I would say they arrived just in time, given what we're facing with kids.
Do you, is there any age group that seems to be more affected? Is it, are you seeing it more in the younger kids, the older kids, middle school?
We're seeing it a little differently. I would say with the younger students, we're seeing more of a behavioral impact. And then the majority of our referrals, particularly even if you look and analyze our Northwell data, are happening in the later elementary to early high school years. So that is probably our largest bubble of referrals that have come through thus far.
Good. Ms. Koshye?
Thank you, Ms. Goldway, to Ms. Wojcik for your presentation. I just have a quick question on the education dashboard chart that you had, I don't have a page number, but on here, it's the, it's actually just the slide right before this one. It seems like our partnership with Northwell Health has been a great benefit for the district as a whole. And everything that you've spoken about it is, seems completely beneficial for all in the district, including community members. And I'm just intrigued by the community education that's given. Can you just expand briefly about how somebody in the community, in the community would be able to take advantage of this program, and what that entails? How would they get in touch with it? Does it work alongside with their, like, their health insurance? How does that partnership work?
So for this in particular, the community education, there's nothing you need to seek out except to be able to participate in whatever it is the educational experience they're offering. So both on our website, and I've worked kind of collaboratively with the PTAs to send out the workshops that are offered for community members this year, and those were varying workshops with different type of focus. Some that I didn't mention early, like I said, siblings in conflict was one, creating healthy systems within your home was one, technology and healthy technology practices was another one. So those are things that you are able to just look up online, know that it's available, and then participate, most of them happen virtually, participate in the experience. The school, it's also important to say that, so the professional development in the middle is for our staff members and the different opportunities that they've been able to experience professional development through our Northwell Health partnership. And lastly, the school avoidance program, that is actually a combination with working directly with students and family members. So that is actually, in order to be, participate in the school avoidance program through Northwell Health, the family also has to participate in it. And this is to deal with some of our students who are struggling with some of the mental health needs that they may have, making it difficult for them to attend school on a regular basis.
Ms. Ostrick?
So I, I, I don't want to compliment you on the presentation. I enjoy a nice presentation as much as anyone, but what I'd really like to compliment you and Ms. Wojcik on is your leadership. You've used, I haven't been keeping a tick count of the words, but collaboration, partnership, working together, improving, developing. I have been a personal participant in some of the work that you are doing in terms of that collaboration. So have staff members, faculty members, administration members of various schools. Everyone is getting better at this because of the leadership that you two are showing. That includes me at home with my own son, both of my sons, in fact, because most of the things that we're developing and the programming that you're sharing collaboratively and in partnership with a number of folks across the district can benefit everyone. And I've been extremely impressed with the number of professional staff at the district who have been participating in all of these workshops. It's a credit to the folks that work here, and it's a credit to your leadership. So let's start with that.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
In terms of, I noticed with interest that the programs that we added were really related to sort of the RISE and SOAR program in the middle school and high school. I noted that there wasn't much talk of what we've brought additionally to the high school. Is it because we're staging this pre-K, elementary, middle school, high school, and then as we're rolling out new things, it's rolling up the district? Is that something I should take away from the presentation?
That's definitely one piece. You know, I think what's interesting and what's been really, is wonderful within the high school here is that pretty much all levels of programming has been available there. So that has not, there's not something that has been, we would need to add to the programming at the high school because they had a well-developed continuum of support and services that they were able to provide. That continuum of services wasn't always available at the other levels. So what we wanted to do was make sure we were offering opportunities, dependent upon what students need at each of those levels, that we were able to look and see if we needed to and could expand, where can we do that? So that we can match the complete level of continuum of service that's currently available at our high school setting here. What we have focused on at the high school is really the mental health supports. And I think that's something too, that, you know, we've restructured even the way that we utilized the psychologists this year. So we have more staff members interacting with our students that require that increased level of mental health support that we're seeing. That happens to be the area that we are looking to focus and enhance even more so at the high school level, while we're looking at more specific programming in the middle school and elementary levels.
And sorry, I'm, I'm just hogging the microphone for a second. As I think through the implications of the sort of levels of the education, the continuum, the general studies, ICT, RISE program at the middle school, as part of the data collection that you, you two are doing, what, talk to me a little bit about the, or talk to us, a little bit about the feedback loop of how middle school and high school transition for some of our special needs kids who are on the Regent's pathways have been progressing? Is there, and it's partially tied into the mental health question, is there, is there a sort of a data consensus feedback about whether or not we feel like our middle schools with special needs are being able to effectively transition into our Regent's program? Is our Regent's program too difficult? Is our Advance program too difficult? The levels of support, can you give a little bit of color around that?
So what I can say is one of the, one of the aspects of why we wanted to really look at establishing the RISE program in the middle schools, so that we could, at least in the HBC side where there's levels of special ed programming, we could kind of reestablish what the general studies program looks like. You know, the students that are in a general studies program, the goal is that they're moving forward with Regent's-based curriculum as they go forward within their career in school. And when we had too many different students in those programs with too many differing abilities, what we weren't able to always do was focus on making sure we were progressing through the curriculum aspects of things while also meeting the individual needs of the students. So what this, the creation of RISE was able to do was also help us focus on general studies and making sure that when we're looking at individual grade level content, we're making sure that students have access to the curricular expectations, but we're building in the level of scaffolding and differentiation that they require, so that they could build those skills to be more successful as they enter a high school program. So I think what we'll eventually start to do is see what is that looking like, and are we meeting what the expectation would be as students leave the middle school setting and enter that high school setting, by looking and seeing if these shifts in programs has helped our students feel a little bit more equipped and better aware of what an expectation would look like. And that's something that we're consistently doing, and that's where the ICT really has also, I think, helped because you're able to help provide students access to general education curriculum, but through the types of interventions and supports they need to be, in order to be successful with that curriculum. I think it's something that we're going to continue to look at and just see, you know, different cohorts have different levels of need. So sometimes you can't go cohort to cohort to see was one better prepared than the other. Sometimes it just happens to be there's different cohorts who have different level of need. And I think with the impact of the, you know, pandemic as well, we've been trying to kind of counteract, helping students feel more ready to enter the high school venue. But it's something we'll continue to really look into and try and collect some more data on.
And just one more quick thing, which is, you know, we're in the business of strategic planning, goals, thinking forward. As we take away from you and Ms. Wojcik, in terms of where you think we need to be potentially focusing resources, attention, strategic vision toward the future over the next few years, can you outline one or two things you think, or highlight one or two things for us, as we think about sort of where to potentially strategically position over the next period?
So I think we want to continue to foster the supports we've already embedded in the area of mental health, and more specifically now, behavior. What we're seeing is different younger students struggling more so with behavior over time. So that's definitely an area we want to kind of encompass. And we've actually even, as we, in our MTSS presentation, focused on supporting students with those levels of need as well. I think the other piece is, you know, creating that community of belonging takes the entire school district and community to come together, so that it really becomes something that's second nature to us. So the more that we could create these inclusive opportunities, these experiences, both within the school setting and extracurricular opportunities, the more we're connecting all different students to one another and helping increase their knowledge about how to interact with differing students, we are creating a community where this becomes second nature to us. And to me, that's the ultimate goal. How do we create an environment where everyone feels they belong and has something that they could be successful with? We have so much of that already. I want to make sure we continue to extend that to all aspects within our district and our extending community.
Okay. Thank you again, both, for your presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Of course.
I actually think that was a great note to end on. First, Mr. Ostrick, thank you for your very kind compliments to the team. I think they're well deserved. And the, the purpose of tonight's presentation was to tie together a number of initiatives that we've put before the board piecemeal, so that you could see them as part of a whole. So the, the strategic goal here is to illustrate how the investments we've been making in UPK, the expansion over the years of ICT classes, the introduction now of a program to keep more of our students in-house rather than getting served somewhere else. It is all obviously part of serving them better, but one of the things that informs me in this work, you know, personal experience, of course, informs us all. I have an older sibling who is deaf and has cerebral palsy, and was in the most restrictive placement possible for the first half of his young life, where he was away at a residential placement five out of seven days a week. So hardly the opportunity to be part of a family, much less be part of a community. So when we talk about creating this community of belonging, a culture of belonging, it is about being really intentional, about having all of our learners be and feel a part of this community. And as Ms. Goldway just said, that may mean giving other kids the skills to be able to understand how to work with peers who may not be typically developing. But I can't think of anything better that we could do for particularly our, our most profoundly needy students than to make them feel like they belong and they are valued and they are part of a community. So all of this is part of that overall goal, and we have more work to do. But I'll end on just a bright note, which is, I was amazed by the Challenger basketball games last year and the way the community really rallied to support the athletes inside the buildings. Their classmates rallied to support them, but the adult population in the community did as well. And I, especially given my own personal history, was just incredibly moved by this community in that moment.
Thank you. Thank you. Before we have Dr. Rogers provide us with his superintendent's report, I just want to take the moment to explain the website which was designed to track hate and bias events in the district, that the district emailed about last week. This reporting system was designed and implemented to help disseminate more data and information to the community and take into account FERPA concerns to protect student privacy. We appreciate the feedback of the community and take it very seriously. Rest assure that our enforcement approach remains the same. We'll uphold our code of conduct, and students engaging in bias-related misconduct will be disciplined seriously. We acknowledge the need for both immediate reporting and accumulated data. The board, the administration, and the district council will continue working on procedures to do this. And until these new procedures are finalized, we'll continue with our procedures as they were before last Friday. So I just wanted to make that comment. And we are going to have Dr. Rogers provide us with his superintendent's report.
Thank you for that. I was going to talk a little bit about state aid, but I preempted myself by doing that during Dr. Ruffo's presentation. I also want to talk about something that has been top of mind and certainly follows from your remarks, Ms. Chang. So we've been engaged in work that builds on work that's always been occurring in SCIOSET to build an inclusive environment for all of our students. We recognize we're in a diverse community. We recognize that means that we have to help our students navigate that in a way that makes all their peers feel safe and feel like they belong. So one of the things that we proposed, we sensed the board wanted some bold ideas, we came up with a bold idea, and I think a good one, to create what was originally called Freshman 101, but a transition class to the high school. So when I think about what we were hoping to accomplish with this class, and what I think we'll still accomplish, but in a different way, I would analogize this to the remarks I made in December. So I, I made some remarks, they were obviously overshadowed by what happened after I spoke. But I said that we, the administration, the board, make the rules, but students create the culture. And what I meant by that was that students are the ones who are interacting when they're in online gaming rooms. Students are the ones who are interacting when they're on social media. Students are the ones interacting in the hallways and in the locker rooms and in the bathrooms, and out on the sports fields, and in all the other places where there isn't close monitoring and close supervision. Students create a culture. So if that culture isn't perfectly healthy, the question is, where do the adults invest in helping build that culture so it isn't entirely created by our students? So we assume and take, and are not surprised that our students at 16 or 17 years old are not surprised that our students at 16 or 17 years old are the least experienced drivers on the road. They are by definition the, the least experienced drivers. We give them instruction to help them be better at being drivers. So we should also be proactive in helping build those cultures so that students feel safer in these places where there isn't close supervision from adults. So we came up with a class and I think two concerns arose from what we created. The first was a worry about what the curriculum might provide that I think we were able to allay those fears with every parent that we spoke to. But the second was a worry about the time that it would take to do this class competing with electives. And if there's one thing that folks in Cyosset appreciate about the high school, it is all the opportunities that it has for students. So we're still, the punchline here is that we're not going to make this a mandatory course in the fall because we don't want the opportunity to build these skills and build culture to come at the expense of opportunities, instructional opportunities for kids. But we are going to still be intentional about how we provide the work with students. It's just going to come in a different fashion. We do pull out wellness classes in physical education. We have the health classes to work with and we're going to take the time over the year to build something that we'll hopefully implement in the fall of 2025 that will not compete with electives, that will look at different aspects of the curriculum, might involve the middle schools a little bit more in building an intentional transition to the high school. But we want, and we've heard that the community is concerned about social media, about students' media literacy and digital literacy skills, the ability to discern what is real online and what is not real online. Certainly there's self-awareness skills, self-management skills, social awareness skills, the ability to have difficult conversations with conflicting points of view that don't result in harmful words or increase in conflict. All of these are things that are skills that can be taught and we have the capacity to do that teaching. And I think more than ever, we have the need to do that teaching. So we will teach into this in the fall and work in that is already underway. And we'll work on something more muscular in the fall to come, in the year after that. But we're certainly mindful of the need to be more intentional about how we help shepherd students through the high school experience. So that's the update on where we're going to be with the SEAL class. And what will happen is the guidance counselors and the administrative teams at the middle and high school will reach out to families who are transitioning into ninth grade to help them understand how that's all going to play out. So that, I'll work on, as the board requested, a letter to the governor on state aid and I'll share that with you. Ms. Chang, you already announced the snow day for the fall. And the final thing is, at the last board meeting, the board asked if we would put together a facilities FAQ for the questions that came in from the community survey that took place. And that is done. We'll have that launched by the end of the week so that folks will have answers to their questions. And our hope is to build a real-time response where there's an email address where additional questions or follow-up can be sent to us and we'll be able to respond to those in like a weekly cadence so that that FAQ is a living, breathing document for the community to understand the facilities work that we plan ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rogers. Are there any questions for Dr. Rogers? Okay, thank you. And the next item on the agenda is the reports from the spokesperson of Citizen Advisory Committee for Finance. Let's have Michelle Yen to give us the update.
Good evening. At our January 9th meeting, we had spoken about how the New York State Comptroller was urging the Board of Regions to make instruction in personal finance a requirement for high school graduation. And we noted that Cyosset has taken steps to include personal finance in part of the curriculum. So it's great for us. Dr. Rufo talked about the type of audits that the district uses and we went over the reports of the internal auditor. They reviewed the revenue and cash management cycle, had no findings there. They also reviewed key controls in benefit calculations and employee deductions. There was one observation. Personnel evaluations, no recommendations. And reimbursement of special education, and there was no recommendations there. So therefore, the district did very well in their internal audit review. This year, they are working on the risk assessment, which we expect to see in June. Then Dr. Rufo and Dr. Rogers gave us an update on facilities improvements. We talked about that Nassau County has lost a lot of students, but that Cyosset has a significant population growth, which we've repeated tonight. We've discussed several aspects of the capital construction financing. We noted that the Boarders will be approving a tax cap on the total project of the cost of those constructions. And we discussed what the board's options might be in presenting those projects to the community. And our next scheduled meeting was supposed to be for tomorrow, but it's snow day, no meeting tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Yen. Okay. All right. So the next one, there are no legislative items. And we're moving on to our discussion items. I already updated, updated the Board about the webinar. So we're just going to move on to the second one, which is the anti-bias task force. The Board was informed of the resignation of one of the anti-bias task force co-chairs. We have been closely following the work of the task force and understand the importance of filling the vacancy. And now I would like to take this opportunity to see if anyone has any suggestions. Ms. Eberson?
I'd like to suggest that you start talking to people within the community and get recommendations to, to see who's interested in taking on that role.
Okay. Is everyone on board for me to start reaching out to some potential candidates? Okay, great. Thank you so much. Okay, so there's no unfinished business and we are moving on to new business. A1 is the approval of appointment of staff changes for February 12, 2024. Can I have a motion, please? Ms. Eberson, seconded by Dr. Park. Are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? A2 is the approval of stipends and hourly rates for 2023 and 2024. Can I have a motion, please? Ms. Falco, seconded by Mr. Greco. Are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? A3 is the approval of coaching recommendation for spring 2024. Can I have a motion, please? Dr. Park, seconded by Ms. Koshyar. Are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? A4 is the approval of the appointment of interim director of pupil personnel services. Can I have a motion, please? Mr. Greco, seconded by Ms. Levitan. Are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? A5 is the approval of employee placed on administrative leave pursuant to civil service law section 72. Can I have a motion, please? Dr. Park, seconded by Ms. Eberson. Are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? A6 is the ratification of stipulation of agreement, Cyosset Therapists Association. Can I have a motion, please? Mr. Greco, seconded by Ms. Falco. Are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? A7 is the approval of appointment, records access officer and Title IX coordinators. Can I have a motion, please? Dr. Park, seconded by Ms. Koshyar. Are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? B items. B1 is the approval of notice of public hearing, budget vote, and election of Cyosset Central School District. Can I have a motion, please? Ms. Falco, seconded by Mr. Ostrick. Are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? B2 and B3 can be taken together. There are the approval of committee on special education and committee on, and committee on preschool special education recommendations. Can I have a motion, please? Dr. Park, seconded by Ms. Koshyar. Are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? B4 is the approval of student, student club charters, 2023, 2024. Can I have a motion, please? Mr. Greco, seconded by Ms. Falco. Are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? B5 is the authorization for contracts for federal Part B funds. Can I have a motion, please? Ms. Koshyar, seconded by Dr. Park. Are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? B6 is the second read and adoption of policy 5440 and 5710. Can I have a motion, please? Mr. Greco, seconded by Ms. Levitan. Are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? B7 is the approval of the resolution for settlement agreement. Can I have a motion, please? Dr. Park, seconded by Ms. Eberson. Are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? C items. C1 is the authorization of service contracts. Can I have a motion, please? Dr. Park, seconded by Ms. Koshyar. Are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? C2 is the authorization of special education and/or nursing contracts. Can I have a motion, please? Ms. Falco, seconded by Mr. Greco. Are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? C4 is the authorization for piggybacking with the Southampton School District. Can I have a motion, please? Dr. Park, seconded by Ms. Koshyar. Are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? C5 is the authorization for deduct change order G01 for more consulting corp. Can I have a motion, please? Mr. Greco, seconded by Ms. Levitan. Are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? C6 is the authorization of the intermunicipal agreement with the Taylor-Osterbe Sand and Salt. Can I have a motion, please? Dr. Park, seconded by Ms. Eberson. Are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? C6 is the acceptance of internal auditor's report and correction action plan. Can I have a motion, please? Ms. Falco, seconded by Mr. Greco. Are there any questions? All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Ostrick.
More of a comment than a question. As Ms. Yen pointed out during the Citizen Finance Committee briefing, where's Dr. Rufo? And I've only been doing this for two years, but whenever I sit in the room with the auditors, I get nervous. Except after two years of sitting in the room with the auditors with you, I'm not getting nervous anymore. So continue to do what we're doing. It's, it's been very impressive. So thank you.
Thank you. All in favor? Opposed? Are there any questions? C6 is the acceptance of, I'm sorry. C7 is the approval of health and welfare services. Can I have a motion, please? Dr. Park, seconded by Ms. Koshyar. Are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? C3 is the adoption of grants. Can I have a motion, please? Ms. Falco, seconded by Ms. Levitan. Are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? Just want to take a moment to recognize the teachers who apply for these grants. Thank you. C8 is the disposal, disposal of broken surplus and/or obsolete equipment, supplies and books. Can I have a motion, please? Dr. Park, seconded by Mr. Rotolo. Are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? Great. So that concludes the business portion for the meeting and we're moving on to the, to audience, to the public. I just, the Board has, has adopted the new procedures for audience to public. I just wanted to read it through so that everyone's aware of the new procedures. We welcome attendance at Board of Education meetings and the Board Business Meeting will be livestreamed and recorded. The Board, the Board values community input and provides opportunity to offer the input via email or in person. Persons who wish to speak during audience to the public must register online to speak in advance of the meeting by 5:00 PM the day of the Board, the Board meeting. A link to the registration form will be made available on the homepage in the district website one week before the meeting, as well as the reminder email that goes out to the, to the community. Persons wishing to address the Board of Education in person during the audience to the public must conform to procedures adopted by the Board. Speakers' remarks must conform to the following rules. Number one, all speakers and observers are required to conduct themselves in a respectful and civil manner in accordance with the rules set by the Board of Education. Number two, speakers must address the Board only, not members of the audience or the audience as a whole. Three, speakers must limit their comments to issues concerning the school district operations, school district affairs, or Board of Education policy. Four, because of the rights protected by the state and federal law, no speaker may speak about an individual student or staff member, nor will the Board or administration entertain questions in public regarding collective bargaining, negotiations, personnel matters, student matters, or legal matters. No speaker may speak about decisions involving specific personnel or specific students. If a speaker wishes to address the Board concerning specific personnel or students, the speaker may write to the Board. And that's all Board members at cyossetschools.org. Number six, speakers may not use epithets, slurs, personal abuse, lewd, and obscene speech, profanity, libelous speech, threats, and fighting words or gestures. Any person who violates, violates the rules above would immediately forfeit the balance of their time addressing the Board. To be recognized to speak, persons must register with their full name and address and attest that they will comply with the rules stated above. In addition, only residents of Cyosset Central School District are permitted to address the Board. Each resident will have four minutes to address the Board, which may be extended or reduced at the discretion of the chair. The Board will not permit polling of Board members by speakers. After every resident wishing to speak has had an opportunity to do so, the Board and/or administration may respond to the resident's questions or comments. No resident will be permitted to address the Board more than once per meeting. No one may record any member of the public in a manner that is disruptive or, or confrontational. I want to inform the audience that if these rules are not followed, or if the audience hackles any speakers, I will first give a warning. And if a second breach of the rules, I will end the audience to the public portion of the meeting. Furthermore, at the December meeting, FERPA policy, FERPA policy was violated during audience to the public, requiring the district to remove, remove the audience to the public portion of the recording. And unfortunately, at the anti-bias task force committee forum, some harmful statements were made. So for tonight's meeting, the audience to the public portion of the meeting will be recorded but not livestreamed. We will release the recording tomorrow after our district attorney reviews the content for compliance. And thank you for your understanding. And with that, we typically allow the students to go first because of school. And since there's no school tomorrow, we are still going to follow that. So I know it's getting late, but I think these students will be fine. And this first speaker will be Marley Brightstein.
Good evening, Board members and Cyosset community. My name is Marley Brightstein and I'm a junior at Cyosset High School. Under the Cyosset School District's mission statement, it states that the district's goals are to have programs that are creative, innovative, and effective, to prepare children to face the evolving challenges in their lifetime, and to foster students who want to improve their communities. And that is exactly what I would like to do. I'm here tonight to discuss and present my idea for a sustainability policy and program for our school district. The health and safety of our environment and our resources is a critical issue for our generation. We must ensure that we do whatever we can to protect the environment for future generations. Schools play a critical role in promoting sustainability, both by leading by example as well as educating its students. By implementing a sustainability program through the curriculum, by teaching and instilling the values of conservation, the importance of natural resources, and environmental preservation, as well as implementing ways for the schools to be more environmentally friendly, a district as large as ours can have a major impact on the environment. Even small improvements can help reduce our carbon footprint and studies have shown that adopting and implementing that adopting and implementing sustainability procedures can have a positive impact on the health and academic performance of the students, assist with teacher retention, and decrease operational costs and demands on natural resources. I've researched many other schools, and there do not seem to be a lot with sustainability programs. We can be one of the first and few school districts to create and implement a sustainability program. We can be the leaders paving the way for others to follow. There are many ways we can help the environment, both big and small. I've put together a proposed sustainability policy, along with some ideas of things that can be done. It includes education, energy conservation, use of green products, and implementation and monitoring. Something as simple as putting recycling bins in each of the schools can make a significant difference. This is not a policy that has to start from scratch. It will incorporate all of the current green activities that the district has in place. Additionally, formal procedures adopted by the board would set forth the specifics of the policy. I've created a packet for each of you to review, and I'm hoping that you will give my proposal consideration. I'm happy to put in any amount of time and research to help this proposal come to fruition. I look forward to hearing back from you guys, and thank you so much for your time and consideration.
Thank you so much. Would you be able to email your policy and ideas to the board, all board members, all board members at Sayyase Schools.org?
Yes, of course.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Marley, if you wanted to leave, I'll address your topic, because I think you may be the only person on this topic. The district has some rules that we have to follow in terms of green products, so I'd be curious and excited to hear your ideas for other things that we might be able to do. So I'm looking forward to the email that you send the board. And we did look at recycling bins a handful of times since I've been here, and we've had a hard time making them economical. So the, that's been a challenge for us. We haven't looked at it recently, and so I think your suggestion is an opportunity for us to revisit that, and it may be that the marketplace has changed a little bit since the last time we looked. And if we can make it work, I think everyone, I feel confident speaking for this board that we would be sympathetic to moving forward with something like this, so thank you for your thoughts.
Okay. The second speaker is Mr. Benjamin Hendell.
Before I start, can I ask for a clarification from you, Ms. Chang? I wasn't sure if I understood your statement correctly regarding the policy change of the emailing out and the charts for the bias incidents. Can you clarify at the end if you said you are moving forward with that or not?
We will continue to report the way we were before last Friday until we have the set procedures to share with the public.
Okay. So I was going to speak on that effort, so I just say that I strongly encourage you to continue sending out the emails. It's a way to keep the public informed about the bias incidents that are going, that are happening in the schools. The chart that I saw on the website was simply a list of DASA reports. It's, as you know, it's split into religion, gender, all the other categories, but doesn't specify which group specifically is being targeted. So I thought that could be very problematic, considering the task force is, the resolution that established the task force, the anti-bias task force, states that its job is to, in part, focus efforts on issues that are most salient or current pressing matters. And if you don't continue keeping track of which community or who is being victim of various bias incidents, and instead just tally up a list at the end of each quarter of the task force, but not be able to accurately respond to issues, and instead just focus on the anti-bias generality, which I've been finding to be quite vague and unresponsive to current problems at hand. So that's all I was planning on discussing.
The next speaker will be Ms. Lesa Shilinoff.
I too want to just quickly clarify that you will continue to report incidents as they happen until otherwise indicated. Okay. So what I wanted to share does not reflect that, so I'm just kind of read it as it is and hope that things continue to stay that way. But quickly, as of last Tuesday, SEAL classes, I was told directly from guidance counselors, were mandatory. So I don't know if it has changed since then or not, but I will continue to, I will clarify that with the guidance counselor at the middle school. Okay. Good evening. My words today come from a place of sadness and despair, but not anger or frustration. I'm just really tired with current topics, recent topics. I'm thankful for having had the opportunity to take a break from all that has occurred in the past at meetings and be present for my family over the past couple of months. And during this time, I had hoped the district would utilize its time wisely, efficiently, and respectfully. Unfortunately, many of my expectations were not met, and I feel compelled to voice my concerns once again in the event that I lose an opportunity like the last time. As representatives of this district, you have sadly hindered those whom you are duty-bound to serve, our children and our students, from speaking at a previous board meeting. They had dedicated hours of hard work to present their thoughts and feelings with the utmost dignity. Their efforts were not solely for your benefit, but for the benefit of the entire community, and yet it was unjustly taken away from them. Consequently, you were reduced to watching a recording. Their moment was stolen, because since December 6, no one could figure out how to conduct a board meeting peacefully. We chose you to represent our families, and we've been let down, but more importantly, our children, all of our children, have been let down. I wish there was a harder fight for them with the same level of passion that we all possess. It is hard thinking that an educational institution like Sayyase would undermine the importance of student voices with the guidelines you've established. It's almost un-American. You are expected to exemplify civics and citizenship. This was the appropriate time and place for all of them to speak and advocate for each other, even if parents and other residents could not. The district provided a lecture by your attorneys that explains everything about expression and freedom of speech and the First Amendment, and all the things that students can and cannot say when and when, but it fell short. That is not how to educate. We do not stifle children. We encourage them to thrive. I have asked more than once also about the decision to restrict the size of bags allowed in board meetings without acknowledgement. If we are implementing specific regulations for board meetings, it is only fair that everyone entering school premises at any time should be subject to the same regulations if there is a credible threat. It is not uncommon for, excuse me, adults and children to bring in backpacks as large as overhead travel suitcases, and nobody knows what's inside of them. Finally, this leads me to the communication that I shared with you all over the weekend. I was informed of the most recent incident of bias in the high school by a member of the community and not by the board or administration. I asked why the community was not informed in a timely manner, and just within a couple minutes or an hour or so later, I received an email that we all got. And I appreciate your prompt response in addressing that issue when it happened in the high school and showing students that actions have consequences, even if it involves police intervention. If my own children had engaged in such a serious action, I would potentially, from counsel, your legal counsel, Sayyase continues to put children at risk and places the expectation of checking up on your inability to protect our children, whether they be Jewish, Muslim, and others, on us. You continue to conflate, like Ben said, every incident of religious bias into one category, and I've had multiple conversations with many people in central administration about this, and sat with you over coffee about this, and it fell flat. And it hurts. It's irresponsible to every marginalized or identifiably religious group. It is your duty to protect our children here while it is our jobs as parents to protect them at home. I have shared your announcement with parents in other districts who are neither Muslim nor Jewish, and they're just as appalled, and it's really hard to process. The community is paying attention. I urge community members with experience and education to consider running for the Board of Education. I would do so myself if my demanding daily commute to Brooklyn did not prevent me from taking on such a responsibility. It is important to have-
Ms. Shilinoff, the four minutes is up. Can you wrap up?
It is important to have equal representation of individuals with experience in education, law, and business working together for our children. We need more educators leading us, because we are currently, what we are currently experiencing is unprecedented and frightening. Teachers are the first to provide solace to students. We see it unfolding real time. We act in loco parentis more than we expect to and do it gladly. The district's level of dedication falls short of what is acceptable for both myself and the children community around us. It is really important to stop the mere lip service and ineffective kumbaya programs. It is crucial for these leaders to take responsibility, step up, and ensure the safety of our children.
The next speaker will be Mr. Keith Sheffords. Mr. Keith Sheffords?
Oh, he's not here.
Not here, okay. And the last speaker will be Mr. Andrew Goldsmith.
Good evening, Dr. Rogers and the school board. I'm here this evening as a parent, advocate, and voice for Sayyase Athletics, and more specifically for the dedicated young men and women who represent our school on the wrestling mat. These athletes pour their heart and soul into their sport, displaying an unwavering commitment to excellence day in and day out. However, despite their remarkable effort, there's one crucial element missing in their journey, a dedicated wrestling room at the high school. Wrestling isn't just about physical prowess or winning matches. It's a sport that teaches invaluable lessons, discipline, resilience, and perseverance. As Dan Gable once said, "Once you've wrestled, everything in life is easy." The trials and tribulations faced on the mat prepare these young athletes for the challenges they'll encounter off the mat. It builds character in more ways than few other endeavors can. It's frankly an inspirational sport. Moreover, our student athletes are not just exceptional wrestlers, they're outstanding individuals who embody strong values. They demonstrate grit, sportsmanship, and a relentless drive to succeed. They are a shining reflection of Sayyase High School and our community. Since 2010, our wrestlers have been without a proper facility to call their own. They may do with half of the auxiliary gym and have adapted to a less-than-ideal situation. The decision to eliminate the dedicated room has also taken away space from the basketball team's ability to practice and even host games, since there's an active and unused scoreboard in that gym. There are a number of wrestlers across the JV and varsity teams are higher than they've been since 2016, and the space is currently inadequate and is becoming unsafe for the wrestlers. Physical education classes are also conducted on the wrestling mats, and it's caused them to rip and peel. This has created spaces in the mats which could potentially cause injury if someone were to trip over them. A dedicated wrestling room isn't just a luxury, it's a necessity which will provide our student athletes the space to train in year-round, which our competition is doing. It's the foundation of which champions are made. But they need our support, they need a wrestling room that matches their dedication and commitment. It's not just about the present team, it's about investing in future generations of wrestlers who will proudly wear our school colors. The team has visited many schools across Long Island that have much better facilities with less than half the enrollment we have at the high school. It's disheartening to see our athletes competing against schools with superior resources. By providing them with the resources they need, we're not just building a wrestling program, we're investing in their development as young leaders who will go on to make positive contributions to society. So let us come together as a community to ensure that wrestlers have the best facilities they deserve. Let us show them that we believe in their potential and are committed to helping them succeed. A year-round dedicated wrestling room is the first step in making that happen. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Shilinoff. Obviously, you've been clear about your point of view, and as Ms. Chang said, the board will have more to say about that subject in the future. So, Mr. Goldsmith, we received a number of comments when we did the community survey around having a dedicated wrestling room for our wrestlers. The board, we shared all the comments that every community member made in their entirety with the Board of Education, so the board is aware not just of the interests that exist in the community, but in your comments, you provided some texture and context for how a wrestling room might help, so I appreciate that feedback. At the last board meeting, the board asked me to do more community outreach work in terms of the board's draft facilities proposal. So, you know, I certainly appreciate your comments. That will feed into the FAQ document that we're preparing and to the board's deliberations on how the draft proposal may be amended before it's finalized.
Thank you so much. This concludes the audience-to-public portion of the meeting, and this also concludes our Board of Education meeting. Thank you so much. Meeting adjourned.